meeting of the school committee. Today is Wednesday, July 10th. It's 6:35 PM. The school committee is, the school committee meeting is being recorded by the district. Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to record this meeting and using their own recording device? Okay, thank you. We're gonna jump right into, today we just have a few things on the agenda since it's basically a school committee workshop, but first thing on the agenda is approval of the warrants. So look for motion to approve the warrants?
There's no motion.
Oh, just approve them?
Yeah, we just put on, so it's like a consent agenda just going around.
Okay. Well, we did that then. Okay. And we have a request from Director Harriman for special education coordinator. Would you like to speak about that?
So I am requesting a sixth special education coordinator. So that's an addition of one. We currently have five special ed coordinators in the district, as you know from the ERS report recently, and we have a large growing number of special education students. We have almost 200 students more than we had a few years ago, so the caseloads of our special ed coordinators are growing. I think they have about 35 more students each on their caseload than they had just a couple of years ago. So in order to really, you know, meet with our initiatives, work on least restrictive environment, you know, we really need that additional coordinator. And this is something we have spoken about as an administrative team a number of times, and, you know, we're all in agreement that this is a need for the district.
Does anybody have any, any questions?
You ask if there's a motion, and then a second, and then you...
Oh, to approve? I guess, yes, sorry. We'll get with it here. All right. And I'd entertain a motion to approve the request for the special education coordinator.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I guess I just have a question. Which school? I mean, I assume this will be shared, or, and this is a full-time?
It would be full-time, and it would be some level of sharing. Obviously, there'd be a little bit of reconfiguration, a little reorganization if we move from five to six. You know, so with seven schools, even with six coordinators, there would be some sharing, but we want to minimize that as much as possible.
Okay. And I guess my question would also be the funding for this?
Yes. We were able to reduce our contracted services line, so we have the funds from there.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. And we will take a vote for approval. All those in favor?
Amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is Mr. Lamarche, a request for an LPN district nurse.
Madam Chair and School Committee, as you know, nursing has been very difficult, especially through the COVID or post-pandemic. Their requirements for their position has become more and more extensive as well. So we've been looking to try to add, we did have, we did cut, when we cut for the fiscal year for the override, we did cut a nurse's position out of our budget. We're looking to add that back in, but not a RN, not a registered nurse, an LPN. We've had a part-time LPN that's been working with our nurses, and that's been very successful, so I work with a nurse coordinator, and they're very supportive of hiring a full-time LPN to fill in. And the means to pay for this is our Medicaid reimbursement. We have rolled out, Ms. Harriman has worked very extensively with our Medicaid third-party to ensure that we are receiving the funds available to us for revenue sources, so we believe that there will be a bump in this because of some of the changes in Medicaid reimbursement. So that is the mechanism to help pay for this, but our nurses have certainly asked for this since the reductions with the override, and are looking for support to put this back in place. Now, the district-wide LPN nurse would help all buildings at times, under the direction of the nurse coordinator, who is Stephanie Moissan. So again, it's been a request, and it is something we'd like to post and have in place to start the school year. So we look forward to your support.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion for, for an approval for the request for the LPN district nurse. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. And before we adjourn, if there's any public comment, I know it's not on here, but if anybody has any public comment and would like to come up, may do so.
Do you guys have to adjourn? Because I thought you guys were just going to your workshop.
My understanding is that a workshop doesn't require the same level of note-taking, so that's why you...
You're just gonna open up the workshop?
Yes, you want to adjourn the meeting, and then go into the workshop, and then it's the actual workshop. Typically, when you have a workshop, sometimes you don't even videotape it, you...
Right. Yeah, I was just confused, because it didn't look like by the agenda that it was gonna, you were gonna reconvene and open a new session.
Yep.
Make sense to me?
Okay. Sounds good. Then I'll look for a motion to adjourn this meeting, so we can move on to our school committee workshop.
Can I move?
Second.
Okay.
No discussion.
No discussion. Everybody's in favor. Well, I was thinking, is roll call or adjournment? A roll call?
No, no, no. Roll call is only for executive session or virtual.
Okay, fair enough. All right. All those in favor are adjourning? There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so then we can roll right into the school committee workshop, and set some goals for the upcoming school year. I know we discussed this kind of, well, we didn't discuss it, but we had mentioned discussing coming up with some, some goals between last meeting and this meeting, if anybody had time to do that, but I didn't know, I wanted to kind of start with maybe even last year's meeting, school committee goals, because we did have some that I think we could probably roll over. And I just wanted to let, to reach out and let, under our enhancing community outreach and stakeholder engagement, we had discussed at the time creating a document for everybody to kind of put down and track where they had been and what, which I was working on today. So I do think that was an important one that we want to check off the list. So I'll send that out to membership later on when I get home and finalize it. And if you want to add to that, so we can have this school year, I'd like to continue on with that for the upcoming school year. I don't think it could hurt, could benefit for people to know where everybody is going and what's happening, and the involvement that way. So, just for starters, I guess. Does anybody have any goals that they would like to bring to the table for discussion?
I did, I did make a couple of notes.
Sure.
Whether they kind of tie into what we've already been doing, but possibly something along the lines with the new curriculum that we've rolled out and staff support. I don't know how that looks, but I know there's a couple, you know, there's some new curriculums that we've brought, you know, that have come forward, and just making sure, I don't know if it makes sense, but anyways, you know, just staff support and new curriculum, so that, you know, that we're, you know, fostering, you know, maintaining our staff and making sure that, you know, that they're happy and all that, which I know that they are, but just, you know, it's not a goal that we've had, so I don't know if that's something that makes sense. And then also, probably along the lines in communication, kind of throwing something in there, because I know it's been mentioned about the school councils and just kind of having a cohesiveness throughout this district with the school committee and school councils, where I think we've, you know, they present, which I know we kind of missed that this year, but maybe trying to, you know, bolster that a little bit. And then also, maybe anything along the lines with the teacher contract coming up. I don't know if that falls in line with the goals, but maybe that goes under budget. Yeah. Something. And then also with the school building, with all of the, you know, since we're having to reimagine, you know, getting our buildings fixed and everything else, you know, kind of boosting that up as well.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Jane.
I don't know how that works, but those are some of the places that...
No, that makes sense. I mean, we're just brainstorming some ideas. I put some things down very similar to yours. And I had kind of bringing unity across the boards, amongst our own board, the administration, the other committees that we have in the schools, and kind of coming together a little more cohesiveness, you know, with a mutual respect in our, in our efforts. So I think that would be a good one to, to take on. But thank you. We'll add that to the list. Well, Eugene, I'm sure you got some?
I have a lot.
I figured. We might have to minimize, but yes, I was hoping that you would. You come up with good ones.
So Maureen, do you want to go?
I just had a thought we should attend the PTO meetings. Somebody should show up at each town, and then you get to talk to the parents and the teachers at the same time, and see if they have any concerns.
So welcome to community, community support.
Okay.
All right. So I'm gonna go on that same token a bit with the communication from the previous goal that we had for, that was, just in case other people don't have it, was the enhanced community outreach and stakeholder engagement, right? And that's, seems to be a theme that we all still want to continue. I also, you know, I've been an advocate for having more school council participation, but I also, you know, even though with the policy of school committee, that CPAC has a minimum one time here, I would also like to see it more than one time. But also, when we're talking about the enhanced community outreach, I think a lot of it has to be where the school committee is really taking a more active engagement with the towns and with the boards in the towns. You know, for, we have, last year, one of the bullet points was the Dudley-Churton School Committee will increase outreach to our communities by strengthening our working relationships with local boards and expanding our presence at school and community events. And I really think a lot of that goes down to when we're tying it in with our fiscal responsibility and fiscal management on how we're getting, helping everyone to have a better working, understanding, knowledge of municipal finance, and specifically with our regional budget and what it means. And I really think us having a more active, increased participation in, you know, it's great that we have a wonderful administration that's able to really speak down to the nuances and the nitty-gritty of certain details when we're at a selectman meeting or a select board meeting, but I really think that as school committee members, we need to be able to speak about that ourselves as well, and we should be the forefront of that conversation. And when we need to go to those nitty-gritty details, then it's, hey, Steve, can you help me out with that data? You know? Instead of Steve talking for an hour about the budget. That it should be cohesive, that it's all of us.
That makes sense. I think that makes sense.
Okay. So, because it seems to me like we're gonna end up keeping the same three goals, we're just kind of tweaking them a little bit. So the other one was enhance educational excellence. All right, and then, you know, part of that was to ensure that students have access to modern equipment and technologies, you know, again, you know, it's been level funded this year, right? So we really need to kind of, that ties in again with the fiscal responsibility and getting other people to understand, you know, know why we need to move forward with that. But, but also is to, we'll seek to maintain the integrity of a comprehensive educational experience for all students, and I think that also ties in with a lot of the PD that Assistant Superintendent Kelly True will be doing, as well as tying that in with the LRE of the district that Heather Harriman will be spearheading. So I, I think that's also something that we need to look at, where it's not just that we're really talking about all 3,400 students when we're making the decisions about education. I mean, I totally understand wanting to keep staff. Like, I love keeping awesome staff. We have so many awesome staff, but it's also about the students.
If we have happy, awesome staff, we have happy, awesome students, mostly.
In a perfect world, I'll say yes, but I know it's not perfect, so.
Nothing is. Okay. Did you, you have more?
Yeah, one more thing. I know it's not a my-goal thing or a school committee goal in essence, but I'd really like to see us come back with a district improvement plan, which is something we haven't had in a, you know, in a couple of years. I think it was always, what, a strategic plan?
District plan was the last title.
District, yeah.
We didn't have the word improvement in it, but yeah.
But I think improvement. We should always be striding for improvement. It's always progress, not perfection, because we can never be perfect, even no matter how much we want to be.
Awesome. I think we're all on the same page, because I had district plan updated. And I also, I mean, I know a one-to-one Chromebook initiative is way out of reach, but I feel like technology and equipment should definitely be a focus. We really need to get updated, get our students updated. I would love to see them not using their own phones, not using phones at all. I would love to see that in school, in every grade. I did like Mr. Elwell's handbook change, so, you know, that's the kind of thing I personally would like to see amongst all grades. And, you know, obviously, we need to take a closer look at the architectural review and kind of start with some of that, and I think a lot of that is gonna come with community support. So community outreach is going to have to be huge. We're going to have to be present. I think the document will show that people are doing some things, we're just not bringing them to the table and telling everybody about them. So there is, there is some opportunity there as well. But those were kind of the same type of things, I think. Like I said, I think we're on the same page with a district plan, our community outreach, and our enhanced educational excellence along with the technology. So I, I think most of these things are kind of continuous. We can check off, you know, we did our operational audits, you know, we, we will have to revise our capital planning.
Well, I think, you know, we did, we did the audit, but have we gone out to the community to connect with the community on what the audit meant? And then we have the DESI audit coming in, what, October?
I was just gonna ask. Do you know?
September, October. It's DOR and DESI.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. All right. And take a look at that and see how we're gonna, how we're gonna work through that, what's gonna kind of take some, some priority, as far as those improvements to the buildings. But I did want to, I don't know, you know, just trying to brainstorm ideas and ways, and I had, when we talked about the architectural review, I know it's been posted, it's, both of the reviews are on the website. So I would imagine that with a welcome back or midsummer out to parents, that would have been included.
Yeah, Madam Chair, it's on my to-do list, and within the next week or two, to send out, so that the, the public is aware that those are available to our communities.
Perfect. I know this gets kind of, I don't know, I'm not really sure of the word, but contemplating, should we have some sort of social media presence as a committee to just post basically things like this to share? I mean, I know it can get, if people are putting, obviously can't be a political anything, it just needs to be, this is the information, because I don't know if they're, if people are getting it. I mean, you and I have pages, we share information without putting opinions on there, but honestly, I would only, I'm only looking for things like this. It'd be great to get newsletters from every school that could be posted, that's really some of the basic information, maybe the PTO, you know, the PTOs, that kind of thing, just to kind of get some information out there, but I'm just throwing it out there. I know when we, when I started with the PTO years ago, we had the motto of, you know, be informed, be involved, be inspired, and get going, and we, we did a really good kickoff to that. I mean, we got people, got on board, and, you know, you really, we need to circle back as a district and kind of get people energized and involved and informed, at the very least, because the more information you have, the more opportunities present itself for other things. So, just some food to thought. I don't know, you know, what other outlets we could use to get some of that information out, but I'd just throw it out there.
Madam Chair, the only thing I would suggest is if you go the social media route, which the school committee here has not done, I would just ask, respectfully ask somebody to check in with MAS-C and see what the, see what the feedback would be on how to do that. Because we'll do all the behind-the-scenes work to set it all up and everything, but I just think MAS-C would help. I don't know if there's a specific policy that you need to have in place, something of that nature.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I don't know.
Certainly, we could certainly support and try to help, help that out in some way.
Okay.
You could have, having like a communications subcommittee. So it's not a deliberation, but it's those, the ones that are administering the site and put that information out there.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good option. But yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to the MAS-C and see what their suggestions are for that, if it's frowned upon. I don't know, I've never seen one.
Every district is different. There are plenty that haven't.
Okay, yeah. It's just a thought. Like I said, if we really need to reach, reach the community, and, you know, a lot of, I've been lately seeing a lot more even students through Facebook. You know, it used to be an older generation thing, but I've definitely seen a lot more kids, students getting involved in it too. So, but you know, we can put all the information from all the clubs, like, it can be, as you said, maybe a subcommittee and just to get the information out. Might be a good, good thing to do, I don't know. Just a thought.
All right. So then, one more thing for the communication part, is that when, because I was just double-checking, but I can't, I don't see my note on who is, who are the liaisons? I don't remember all the liaisons. I remember Maureen's for CPAC, because I do a lot of CPAC, so I have to get Maureen involved with that and kind of bridge her in, which is great, but...
She's Dudley, too.
Yeah. But the other part is, is when it was brought up to have liaisons, to kind of have like, oh, here's your point of contact, there was no further instruction given, there was no, no like wraparound to it, no, what do we expect, how many times do I think you should reach out to the select board, or give them an update, or what kind of updates are we getting, or what's, you know, or to DCEF, or whatever. I mean, I think it's a good way to go, and I think like starting it with like, okay, we're having an idea of a liaison, we think this should go, so it's like not seven people all trying, or what, you know, but, and getting cross messages, that it's just like coming from the school committee through one person, which is great, but then without any expectations or guardrails, or it just...
Right. Well, as the liaison last year, I basically sent an email to all the selectmen and town administrator here and said, you know, as a liaison for Churton, please reach out, you know, let me know if there's any meetings coming up. Certainly, that involved the school or the budget, you know, and I got a few emails about a few different things, and certainly some messages about things. So that was, but you're right, there was no starting point. Nobody said, hey, you should reach out. I just figured that made the most sense, so that's what was done, but there is no, no guideline. So maybe we create that, if we're gonna create that kind of position.
Madam Chair, through the school committee, I know in Policy Sub, we talked about a school committee handbook. That could definitely fall into the enhanced community outreach and stakeholder engagement, so that there's a handbook available, so people understand what school committee actually does, and that a liaison piece could be, could be placed in there. So I think that could definitely fall within that goal for school committee as well.
Perfect.
Yep.
Sounds good. So a separate school committee handbook. Okay. Does anybody have any other things for discussion on here, for goals? I mean, obviously, clean these up and, and kind of put them down from what we came up with so far. I would imagine that they can be adjusted and should be kind of, you know, a check-in midpoint, kind of how we're doing, what we can be doing to, to improve. I know there was a lot of, a lot of information in both of these reports, but some of it is certainly gonna be administration's responsibility, not school committee's responsibility, but...
But, Madam Chair, it's a great point, because as we talked about with the architectural review, it will be our responsibility to boil that down to some type of better public consumption. You know, obviously, with that linked to it in every way, shape, or form, but I just, I think that we do have a role and responsibility to provide you with the information in a boiled-down fashion, both that and the ERS report, for your public engagement.
Hi, ladies. I'm, sorry. We were just going through kind of last year's goals and basing some of next year's goals through last year's goals. A lot of the community outreach, we discussed, kind of creating some unity across all the boards and committees and councils and administration, getting some information out. Talked about district improvement plan, touching on that, and revisiting that idea, or that, that district plan, I should say. PD tied in with the LRE for all students, talked about that. Technology, keeping up with technology and trying to improve our budget for, for technology, well, the funding, I should say, for technology and equipment and upgrades and things like that. So we're not, not reinventing this to make it crazy, we're just kind of checking off what we've already done. Obviously, the district improvement plan based off of some of the reviews will need to be, as Ms. Lamarche just said, they'll kind of break it down and what prioritize some of the, some of the things found on both the ERE, ERS report, ERS report, and the facilities report, so that we can kind of work off of that, too. But I don't know if you had thought of any goals or any just talking points that you want to throw out there, but that's what the workshop is for. So if there's anything that comes to mind, feel free to add to, add to discussion.
I just wanted to be sure, so we've already gone through everything?
Yep, we adjourned the regular meeting, we're just in the school committee workshop now.
Sorry.
No? It's okay. I find seven o'clock to be easier myself, to be honest. So I think we might have to reconvene.
You all agreed. You all agreed, okay? We went through a first read, a second read, you know?
We tried it, and I feel like we might have to, might have to look at that again. So we want to put that back on a future agenda. Sorry, Jane. Did you have any, anything particular worth noting? I did, I created a document, I'll send it out later. We were talking, again, to kind of track our community involvement, because I think some, there are things that we're doing that's not being tracked. And I shouldn't say tracked, but I mean, people should know that we're getting out in the community and doing certain things. So I created a basic document, so that we can kind of, you know, follow through with that, that goal and continue on with it. Obviously, you know, I did, for myself personally, put the community things, I didn't say every time I went to speak with Mr. Lamarche or Mr. Matthew, or met with the principals or anything, like that's, that doesn't seem necessary. But some of the other, the other types of things, you know, the town meetings and the PTO meetings, and, you know, just kind of some things like that. So if you all want to add to that later on... So if you all want to add to that later on, I will send that out. And if you have any suggestions or changes, certainly let me know and I can add to it or whatever, but it's pretty basic.
So that we're only adding for fiscal year 2025, right? We're not backdating, right?
Well, it was.
2023, 2024, that's gone, so.
That's, that's true. Moving forward, we'll just have the new, yep, we can do that. Yep, that's fine. Let's see. Any other things for discussion for goals?
So are we coming up with like three, how many goals are we trying to come up with? Three?
Well, we're kind of keeping with what we had, the theme of last year, yeah, with the, you know, enhancing community outreach, stakeholder engagement, educational excellence, fiscal. So we're kind of keeping with that same theme, but certainly open to any, any changes, additions. There's, there's quite a few things under there, but there are some to be taken out.
So the three themes are fiscal, community and education focused.
Yep. For now. I mean, if you, if there's something else that we feel should be on there, then we can certainly do that.
I mean, my opinion after sitting through this review is this could definitely help us focus more acutely on certain things to be more fiscally responsible. Like maybe narrow it down, how we're being fiscally responsible this coming year based off of this report. The only thing this report doesn't really encompass is community, I think. But it covers how to improve fiscally and our resources within the education.
Okay.
I mean, my take on this audit is we have well-paid staff that are highly experienced and trained, and we need to utilize their expertise to train new incoming staff. Like we discussed last time we met, maybe setting more standards around stipends and all of our like team leads and just having more regulation around those stipend positions. You know, I know we're not going to get a description for every single stipend in the district by the end of the school year, but if we start and set a goal of starting to narrow down some of those most important stipend positions.
So like differentiating responsibilities and stuff for those school support roles?
Yeah, for example, one of the stipend positions in the MNA, and again, there's only seven or eight nurses in the district, but that stipend positions has very specific like checkboxes of this is my extra duty because I'm stipend.
Madam Chair, at school committee, we certainly support that, just remember we're entering into negotiations with the teachers and that would have to be negotiated for those, what those look like.
Yeah.
Yep.
And they were during the MNA negotiations, and it might be the perfect time to actually sit down and start having those conversations about what does this stipend look like to you versus what we think it should look like during those open meetings, you know, as we are entering.
And Jamie Delogo did bring up teaching negotiations as part of a successful teaching negotiations as a goal for school committee this year.
Yeah.
I'm paraphrasing. I'm sorry.
No, you're, perfect. It's important.
Okay.
But also, one last thing is focusing some PD for our administrative team. That was a fault that we kind of had, that we have a lot of, not inexperienced, but a wide variety of experience within the administrative team. And focusing on how to navigate becoming a leader for the district in, in different areas, you know. As much as there's similarities, there's a lot of differences from elementary to middle to high school. So, but there's leadership styles that they could benefit from each other, and there's such a wide variety among the principals and other administrators that they could benefit from some development together. And that was another focus during this audit.
I saw that in there too. That got my attention too. Utilizing the people that we have already to help or
Yeah.
teach those that could use, everybody can always use, use new ideas and fresh ideas and a little support. So utilizing those as support systems that we already have in place and building on them. And I know we have a lot of, a lot of paras that are new and getting them the support. But I think the PD was pretty good last year for them, so continuing on with some of those, those ideas.
And I think the PD for the staff is wonderful, but I think PD for leadership might look a little bit different because it's a different role. So that's probably not something that's ever thought of, because you're too busy thinking about.
It is actually. We actually already have a semi-plan for PD for administrators for this year.
Perfect.
Yeah. So we're going to start working on that.
Great.
Because it is super important.
Awesome. Anything else you want to bring forward? Not at the moment. What about you, Kathy? How's it going?
Good, all right.
We were obviously just kind of working off last year's goals, kind of talking about them, checking them off and adding to some of them, obviously adjusting due to these, the reports that we had that came through. We still have a pretty, a pretty good amount of goals that we want to put together on here. But they stick with, in the three that we had last year, basically tied into the community outreach and obviously educational excellence and the fiscal responsibility. But if you have anything that you think could be added?
I just wonder how much we should be advocating with our state and local representatives to, you know, look at the chapter 70 funding model and, you know, what we could be doing for outreach outside of our school committee. Because that, you know, it certainly impacts budgetary matters.
Oh, that makes sense.
Maybe we can tie that into the budget type of thing.
Yep, this is that recent, recent one going through. It's not going to be voted on today, but it's about, like, I'm not a big fan of astroturf myself, but we do have an astroturf field, and it would basically ban astroturfs from municipalities.
With certain chemicals in it.
Certain chemicals in it, sorry.
Put PFAS in it.
Yes.
So I don't know, I saw that too. Madam Chair, I saw that too. I don't know if our field was built that way, so I was, I did forward it off to the Principal Elwell and the Athletic Director, Chris O'Donnell, to ask for feedback on that, because it's grandfathered in until it needs to be upgraded or fixed. And then once it's fixed, it has to be redone.